To order the meeting of the Rules Committee for Akron City Council. And would also like to entertain a motion that we suspend all rules. And apply as applies to in-person meeting and voting of a motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Yes, second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, I.
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 And if if you would, Sarah, go ahead and do a roll call if we could, please.
Sure, Freeman.
I.
Fusco.
I.
Imobian.
I.
Connor.
I.
Malik.
I.
That that motion passes five to zero.
Okay, very good. We have we have two items today. And two resolutions. Like to read in the first resolution. This is a resolution declaring the month of September as Akron welcoming month. In the city of Akron, Ohio, to honor the history, culture, and contributions of all immigrants. And refugees to the city of Akron and Summit County and declaring an emergency. And I believe that we do have, who would like to take the lead on this? Mr. Fusco.
Sure, I'd be happy to. And one almost has to consider both pieces. But recognizing this is being read in first. The the goal and objective here is for the city of Akron collectively to have discussions. To have discussions not only about immigrants and refugees. But but with all of our neighbors so that we can we can learn more about one another. And so that we can grow as a community altogether. You know, of course, as I said, one kind of begets the other. In terms of these discussions with regards to Columbus Day, which is going to be the next piece that's being brought in. Asking that both of these pieces that we take time on these and have more discussion on these. A lot more, but what we're hoping for is to take that the concept with regards to. Immigration and the refugees that we had passed in 2015. In terms of granting Akron as a welcoming community. But taking that and having discussion. About not only not only immigrants and refugees. But our black community, our gay community, our all communities. And 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 having these discussions being led. By a professional moderator so that we can. Have measurable objectives and goals. And and that's that's the thought behind all of this. Uncertain, I don't believe this year, number one, to do this correctly, we need to have. Someone again, a professional moderator. And it's going to take some time to plan this out in order to be truly successful. We have to plan it out. We're going to have to find budget. We're going to have to find a moderator. And due to the fact that that COVID obviously is is here. I believe that's that's just going to give us an opportunity in terms of planning this out. And 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 going forward the best possible way we can. But again, we're very receptive to listening.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Imobian.
Yeah, I'm I'm just curious. Is there a particular reason why we suggest in September?
Yes, we we had talked about October. But before, you know, that holiday with regards to the the like I said, one kind of gets the other begets the other. In terms of these these steps. But September is before October. It seems to be a good time just to get the community together in various communities all over Akron. In September.
The only reason I'm asking, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
The only reason I'm asking is because. These conversations need to be conducted throughout the year. And. I'm just, I I'm always hesitant when we start relegating things like. Black folks have the month of February. And I guess we're supposed to discuss all of history and all that during the month of February and don't discuss it anymore. But you know, the conversations that we need to have around race and. And 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 getting to know our neighbors and being the kind of city that we want to be. I just think it's something that needs to happen on a regular basis. And when we relegated to a month, I just. I don't want people get locked in thinking that that's the only time that we can have these discussions. And I know that that's not what you're suggesting. It's just that sometimes when you relegate or identify a particular period. That it seems to only happen that time. And I can only tell you that the experience that. Councilwoman Samples created through this mirror that they did on Howard. It was such a. Warm experience. You know, I didn't do anything but attend, I went there and watched the people. But there were so many people that just walked up and just started participating. Because they were artistic, because they were concerned, because this is their community. Was such a beautiful experience. And when these things happen like that. It it seems like the real kind of humane peace comes out in such a way that's so meaningful. So I I just, that's my only hesitation about anything like this, because I know when we. Identified ourselves as a welcoming city. We wanted to make sure that everybody is welcome to Akron. And we want everybody to feel a part of this city. And. It just, that is my only hesitation is just identifying a month. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm done.
Any other questions or yeah, Mr. Swirsky?
Yeah, just, I think what Mrs. Imobian brought up was good. I think we can take a look at some of the language and just say that the the month of September. Of course, it's going to be the welcoming month, but we hope that the Spurs follow up and continuous. Not only dialogue, but I I really like. You brought up Mrs. Imobian brought up the examples that Mrs. Samples just did. But it wouldn't be just limited to dialogue and discussion, but sometimes activities. Like what just did with the Black Lives Matter mural. Are an even better way to engage people, to involve them and to get them to communicate with each other. So we'll we'll take a look. There might be a few extra words here or there that we need to add. To make sure that it's not limited to just September. But that that is a catalyst for year-round discussion and activities.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Connor.
I think that always we should promote year-round discussion. And but I think creating a welcoming month allows for a defined time maybe to. Have cultural celebrations that we bring out so that other people can experience. Different cultural activities. And have a timeframe that's a moderate weather-related, because we do rely on weather. You have an opportunity with kids being back to school to open those discussions in the classroom also. But I don't think we're limiting it as much as September could be a month to more celebrated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fusco, did you have your hand up?
Thank you, I did. Yeah, I I want us to make sure that we also. Remain focused. I I'm very receptive to looking at it and trying to 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 make sure that these discussions. Because I think what this amounts to is is that. I I believe in our community, we have to have some tough discussions, some hard discussions. It's not going to be easy. But 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 I believe that. Overall, if 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 it's planned out, if it's discussed in terms of. How we get to our again, and and I think it's going to take us a long time just to figure out what it should look like. And and also. Set some objectives, some goals. And have it professionally moderated so that we can, you know, so so that these initiatives can can be fruitful. And 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 that's the goal and objective, but. I'm absolutely receptive to considering everyone's input.
Yeah, I I would just concur with your goals and objectives that. Aim for nothing and you hit it every time. So if there could be something, you know, something that we can define, we can. Say, oh, yes, we've accomplished that. And here's how we know we've accomplished it. So other questions or comments? Looking around. Oh, yes, Mr. Swirsky.
Just, this is a statement, setting aside a month. Or dialogue and activities is a statement of peaceful intention. And it's an intention that sometimes. The media prefers to look for conflict or bad intentions. But we are going to prioritize a statement of peaceful intention. That that is what is expected in our communities. And we want all people of all communities to feel. The intention, the peaceful intentions of those in other communities. And I think could be really a beautiful thing that we all come together around.
Thank you. I'm looking to see here if I see, yes, Ms. Uh, pardon me, Margot, you were you're on the second page of all my pictures here. I did not see your hand. Please go right ahead.
Oh, no problem. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to speak. In favor of this piece, I think that with all that is going on on a national level. What we even see happening here in the city of Akron. Now is a perfect time for us to bring the communities together to begin to have some conversations. Jeff talked about it. Some of those conversations are not. The easiest conversations to have, but they're the conversations that are extremely necessary. Necessary for us to have so that we're able to come together, work together. Again, in order for us to work together to move, to make our cities, our communities, our neighborhoods better. We have to better understand one another, understanding our differences. And so I think this presents a really great opportunity for us, not just to say that, you know, the city of Akron is a welcoming city. But to really show that we are really putting forth the true steps and the work to really become a welcoming city. By bringing people together, talking about our differences. And having a better understanding, not just of black, white. But also when we talk about. Sexual orientation, when we talk about individuals who have handicaps, all types of differences. And having understandings of all of those things across the board. So just really wanted to speak in favor, and I think this is a great piece, and I think that the timing is spot on.
Yeah, I would agree. Before we went live here, we were having a conversation. I'd heard an analysis last week of. Two two black pastors, two white pastors talking about everything that's going on. And they said they liken some of the demonstrations and protests going on as as to being, you know, a collision. And said, really, what we need to have is is an intersection where there's a four-way stop. And where everybody's stopping and they're looking and they're listening. And I I think, I kind of think that describes what we're doing here. Stop, look and listen and then learn. Yes. Ms. Samples.
Thank you. So I I just. This resolution coming in and I think dialogue is necessary and activities are fine. But. I think we really need to spell out what is the end goal here. Because it seems like whenever we have some kind of issue within our city or across the country. We start having these meetings and these town halls and these get-togethers, let's talk about it. And then it's like in six months, it's like nothing happens. It's like, okay, we've talked enough. Now people will forget about it. I want to make sure we're not just massaging people. Just at to pass, making sure that there is an end goal here. For this and not just lip service, because I I think right now we are in a in a very sensitive time. Not just in this city and with us personally, but in this country. And I just want to make sure that there's there's something that's going to follow us having these dialogues and not just having them.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments? To the sponsors, we okay to refer this out and take a continue to look at this and maybe get passage here in the near future?
Yes, please. I I make a motion that we refer this item.
Okay.
So I'll start. I'm not on the committee.
Okay, thank you. We have motion. Second, all in favor, let it be known by saying I.
I.
Okay, thank you. Sarah, I'm having a little bit of trouble on my iPad here, so I'm going to have to ask you to read the next piece out.
Sure, no problem. Item number two, resolution recognizing and declaring the second Monday in October. As Italian-American Heritage and Culture Day in the city of Akron, Ohio. To honor the history, culture, and contributions of the Italian-American community to the city of Akron and Summit County and declaring an emergency.
And and our sponsors on this piece were?
Sponsors are President Somerville, Councilman Fusco, and Councilman Swirsky.
Okay, well, I would probably ask to hear from one or all of these individuals at this time. Mr. Fusco.
Yes, thank you, Chair. We also have someone online here, Mr. Valillo, whom I would like to request that. If he could share some of the some of his thoughts. He worked on this as well. And Chairman, I don't know if you want to open up with that or later on, bring him in. It's up to you.
Now, if we could hear from Mr. Valillo now, welcome, Mr. Valillo. And I would like to like to hear from you at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. President Somerville and committee members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you about the. Resolutions naming the second Monday in October American Italian-American Heritage and Culture Day. And the month of September, the Akron Welcoming City Month. Again, my name is John Valillo. I live with my wife Julie and our grandson Landon. In the Portage Lakes area of the city of Green. Where I recently participated in the Green Diversity and Inclusion Initiative. I was past president and I serve on the Board of the Ohio and Erie Canalway Coalition. I was past president and I served on the Board of the Italian-American Professional and Business Club. I was a delegate to the Council of Italian-American Societies in Summit County. And the entertainment coordinator of the Italian Festival Downtown for a few years. I served as a trustee and I'm a current member of the Sons of Italy here in Akron Lot 685. In September of 2017. Issues of social justice and the growing movement to replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. Were brought before council and the citizens of Akron. Unfortunately, the resolution served to create an adverse reaction with the local Italian-American community. Who have celebrated Columbus Day for decades. As a day recognizing the traditions and contributions of all American Italian-Americans to American society. The proposed resolution failed then, but this council recognized the issues remain unresolved. And took the progressive step of naming the first Monday in October, the North American First Peoples' Day in 2018. After the council decided the issue in 2017, Italian Council President Harry Chicalini. And I asked Councilman Neal to meet and discuss how we could help heal the divisions that had resulted. Councilman Neal wanted to make it known to the Italian-American community. That his efforts were not to restrict the community from observing its past traditions and culture. But that the growing scholarly scholarly research. Into the consequences of the voyages of Christopher Columbus. Both intended and unintended. Had led many to believe that the North American slave trade and indigenous deaths by disease were directly related. We agreed that should any action arise that involved changes to Columbus Day in Akron. That all sides of the issue would take part in the eventual resolution. Early last year, President Somerville and Councilman Fusco. Approached former Deputy Probate Court Administrator Tom Cardone and myself. To take part in discussions about the Columbus Day issue in Akron. We agreed and held many meetings over the next year and a half with local black clergy. And with leaders of the sixteen Akron and Summit County Italian Clubs and Societies. What you see before you are the result of those discussions. Within the resolutions and after many revisions, we attempted to show the value of the Italian-American. And all immigrants to the economy and social life of our city and county. History of Columbus Day is shown leading back to the late 1890s where President Harrison. Selected Christopher Columbus to be a symbol of inclusion. For Italian-American immigrants who are coming to America by the thousands. And for Native Americans to walk together in parade in New York City. As a show for all Americans that these oppressed minorities are members of society. Two recent horrific events led the president to declare this day as Columbus Day. A mass lynching of Italians who were falsely accused of murder in New Orleans. And the massacre of Lakota Sioux in Wounded Knee, South Dakota. President Harrison selected Columbus as the symbol of togetherness and diversity. Not Michelangelo, Da Vinci, or Dante. Columbus Day was designated an annual federal holiday in 1934 by President Roosevelt. And the Italian-American community has celebrated this holiday every year. With showcases of family traditions, faith services, and of course, food. The day holds great significance to this community as a sign that they can hold on to what what they value. And be proud as Americans. Realizing the significance, the preparation of these resolutions. Attempt to create a unique Akron solution. Our aim was not to create divisions in our community, especially during these turbulent times. But to acknowledge the past and move toward the future of understanding inclusion and peace. I ask your full consideration of these resolutions. And unanimous approval to show our community that we can take the steps needed to move forward. And to grow with all to benefit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Valillo. Thank you very, very much. Mr. Fusco.
Yes, thank you. Many of us on council were here in 17 whenever this was first introduced. And and I know me personally, I could have handled that situation better. But I can tell you this, I've grown from that situation. What had occurred in 17. And, you know, after that, I took the time to discuss and have conversations with the Italian community. As well as black clergy and the and some in the black community about what had occurred. I've learned and I've grown since that studying the Christopher Columbus, studying racism. And I've come to my own realization that that I was I was born with a leg up, if you will, that the white privilege. And and I've grown. And 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 I believe at this point, at this juncture. In the city of Akron, I'm I'm hoping, and that's why it's kind of like one begets another in terms of the. The welcoming concept, taking it a step further and having these conversations. So so hoping that that many other Akronites can grow. From this, on this particular resolution, asking for time yet again. And asking for input from all of council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco. All right, we'll open up for comments. Mr. Swirsky?
Well. I just. Not knowing what we know about American history. It's difficult to justify to continue to celebrate Columbus Day. And taking a look at American history, we also see the important contributions. And we value and recognize. The fact that we have a great. Assembly of Italian-Americans in Akron and in our neighbors in the suburbs. And that these are really good people. Who we want to respect and cherish as we do all of our people. Columbus. It's hard to understand. But Columbus really shouldn't be recognized for discovering America. There were already people here. There are, there were already. Human beings who were living in this land. So without getting into base about who discovered what, there were people here. And I don't know if the Spanish got here first or another group. There were people here. They were real people. And Columbus wasn't simply an explorer on voyages. He was also a government official. He was a governor and a viceroy. And when he was acting as a government official, there is now documentation. Of abuses, horrible abuses, who used extreme violence. Who incorporated slavery and brutality throughout his his ward. So switching our celebration away from. Someone who made those kinds of actions. In our world to celebrating the real heroes in the Italian-American community. The people who have played by the rules, paid their taxes. Who in some cases have made notable contributions to science, to culture, to art. These are the people that we should honor. And by doing so, we are a lot more connected with. The American values of equity. And democracy and something and modernization of our city.
Thank you, Mr. Swirsky. Looking to see any other comments or questions? Yes, Ms. Samples, you might unmute yourself. There you go.
Thank you. So I I think my my question would probably be to Mr. Valillo. I know you all said you met with some pastors. I'd like to know who those pastors were. 2017 was. I remember that day in council like it was yesterday. I remember our jobs being threatened by people who came down here because they thought we were trying to get rid of their culture, which wasn't the truth. So I really would like, I'm glad that we're taking time on this, but I would like to speak with Mr. Valillo myself. I'd like to speak to probably some of the residents who came down there. When we brought in trying to get rid of Columbus Day, because I want to get an understanding from them as to. How we got here, because I I. Spent two years, almost three years, and I hadn't heard anything else about it. It was never about, as I stated back then, it was never about trying to get rid of one's culture. That's one thing I would never do. But just the divisiveness of what had happened at that time. And now we're here unbeknownst to quite a few of us. I I just would like to speak with the Italian community while we're taking time on this. Just for my own clarity and understanding, even if that's even with Councilman Fusco. I think that's important for me to do for myself, if you would.
Absolutely, we're we are totally open to continue the discussions. And as you see in the resolution. It it's all part of a plan to. Bring the community together with the conversations that need to be held. I'm going to have to defer to President Somerville for the names of the clergy. But as far as meeting with the Italian-American community, I can certainly facilitate that.
Ms. Somerville.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted just to comment. Jeff had mentioned this previously, but the welcoming piece. And the Italian heritage piece really do go hand in hand. Councilwoman Samples asked, you know, what is the end game with the welcoming piece? Italian Heritage Day is the end game. Because what happened was we had a conversation. Honestly, and I'm admitting out of my own ignorance, I didn't even really have a true understanding. Of the connection between Christopher Columbus and the Italian. and the Italian-American community. It really was not until we began to have discussions, we sat down and we began to really have meetings about this. And in these meetings, we had members of the Italian Heritage Community. We had pastors from the African-American community. Some of those pastors were Pastor Denilia Williams. Pastor Carl Wallace was involved. Pastor Nelson was also involved in some of those conversations. But what happened was, we got around the table and we began to talk and really trying to understand what some of those differences really are and what they're really about. Come to find out, it wasn't necessarily that, you know, Italian-Americans were celebrating the man, Christopher Columbus. It was, for them, it was more so about their heritage. But we didn't find that out until we actually sat down and began to talk and have conversations about it. So Italian Heritage is just really just about that. I think Councilman Swirsky talked about it. The whole idea is that we can really begin to celebrate the Italian Heritage in the city of Akron, to have a more understanding of the, the heritage, of the culture. And also an opportunity for us to celebrate, you know, some of the real heroes and the Akron Italian-American community here in the city of Akron. So, again, we're planning on taking time. I, I hope that all of council will support this piece. Councilwoman Samples, if you have any of the further questions of any other pastors who are at the table, but again, that's what the welcoming piece is all about. Coming together, bringing people who are different race, different, different in religion, culture, coming together, figuring out how we can work together. And that's the end game with the welcoming piece, and this is a byproduct of that, Italian Heritage Day. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking around to see if we have any other questions or comments. Councilman Malik.
Yes, thank you very much. And thank you to those who have spoken before. You know, in twenty seventeen, I was not a member of council, but I remember watching those council meetings and what happened in the aftermath. And it was a frustrating experience for me as well to watch. And, you know, I appreciate that we're at this point where we're making this change. And I think, you know, something that Councilman Swirsky hit on in talking about Columbus, you know, this, this was originally a attempt by, you know, President Harrison and the sort of white Protestant base of the country to bring in white immigrants and include people who had been marginalized. But in doing so, it stepped on other people who were marginalized, whose narratives were not yet part of the discussion. And now in twenty twenty, those narratives are more fully part of the discussion. We, we know about the history of our indigenous people in Akron and all around the country, but I think this moment, as we just saw a few days ago with Juneteenth, invites us to ask what narratives are still not part of the discussion that should be. And hopefully, that's something that we can talk about over the next few weeks with this welcoming month and how to have discussions about where to go from here, about what narratives we still need to do more work in, in lifting up. And I think that's an important part of this going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Malik. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I'm looking here. I do not see anyone, so. Mr. Lombardo, was that your hand? Please unmute. That we have, we've lost your picture, but we have your voice.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, I just wanted to give my thoughts as appreciative of Mr. Valillo and all the council people that were on this piece of legislation or resolution. My name, I'd like my name added also. Because, you know, again, I, I was ignorant too with Christopher Columbus and all the history behind that. But the fact of the matter is that there are many good, you know, Italian-Americans. There's many good people of all nationalities in this community, and, and we need to recognize that in, in going forward. So, again, I just appreciate everybody in taking the time to discuss this because it is an important piece.
Thank you very much. Okay, I've heard asking for time. Yes, Mr. Fusco. You're muted.
Hello, Mr. Freeman. Thank you. I'd like to, short of anyone else wishing to speak, request that we take time, but first of all, I just want to thank Mr. Cardone and Mr. Valillo and the pastors. There are a lot of different conversations with a lot of folks. And, and I just want to thank them for all of their efforts. And I know we have a lot more conversations to go. I'll request time, short of if there's anyone else wishing to speak, that's fine too, but I request time at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, I see that Councilman Neal's hand is up.
Okay, let me scoot over to the next page here. All right, Mr. Neal, I have, oh, there you are. Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Neal.
Okay, I don't know if you can hear me okay, because I'm using the phone. First, Mr. Valillo, it's good to see you again, sir. I, to bring those members of council who weren't all in council, when this original piece came in, I would like to ask members to please read four pieces, please. Can you still hear me? Because the, the video went off.
Yeah, we can hear you. I can.
Okay, the video went off, so I'm speaking through the phone.
Okay, Mr. Neal, we've lost your audio. Okay. Mr. Neal, we've lost your audio. I would encourage you to reach out via email. You'd referred to four different things that you would like for council to look at. And I would encourage you to do it that way. I, I apologize for what's happened here. We had a motion for this, for time. Is there a second?
Mr. Freeman, can you hear me?
Okay, I can hear you now. I'm.
Okay. If members can read the original National Day of Racial Healing that came in back in two thousand and sixteen, fifteen and two thousand and sixteen, then if they could also read the original legislation that came in in September of two thousand seventeen. And for those who weren't a part of council, what I'd like for you to understand, it was during the DACA discussion when the, there was much discussion on who was an immigrant and who wasn't an immigrant, that the council was aware that this piece would be coming in, even though it didn't come in until much later. So I think for people to have a good understanding, if you could read those three pieces, as well as the Council of Italian-American Societies rebuttal to the original piece that came in in two thousand seventeen.
Okay, very good. Anything else, Mr. Neal? I think we've lost Mr. Neal again. Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second for time?
I, Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Could you just wait a minute or two to make sure that Councilman Neal is complete? I think we can all, the rest of us would wait a few minutes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm here. I don't know why the phone keeps kicking off. Thank you, Mr. Swirsky. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Read, just read those supporting documents. My two concerns are this. One, when you talk about the welcoming day, it talks about immigrants. And we say the end game is Italian community. People of African descent aren't immigrants. The month of October is Italian History Month, if I, if I'm, could stand to be corrected. My concern is that we're picking a day that is known to be the day of one who initiated the slave trade. So, again, I'm glad that we're going to have discussion, but I think for everyone to have a good understanding, if they can read the documents that came in back in two thousand
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move on here. I need a second to time.
A second.
All in favor? Aye. All in favor for time? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And Mr. Neal, yeah, the documents you want us to look at, if you could refer to those and, and get us that, that would, that would be helpful.
I'll ask the clerk to send them out.
Okay, thank you very, very much. I don't think there's anything else to come before us. A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. You are adjourned. Thank you so much.
Hey, everyone. We have Public Utilities and Green Committee next. The chairperson is Swirsky. Members are Freeman, Connor, Samples, and McKittrick. And we can go ahead whenever you're ready to get started, Councilman Swirsky. Councilman Swirsky, you're still muted.
Okay, all right. Thank you all for your patience. The first step, we want to, we need a motion all council rules that require or contemplate in personal meetings and in personal voting. Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Second thing we need to do is make sure that the attendances, not the attendance, the notes, the minutes from the last meeting is approved. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion to accept the minutes.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a new piece before us. I'm going to read it in if I can on my phone, but ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designate to apply for, and if granted, enter into an agreement or agreements with the water supply revolving loan account for various water supply capital projects and declaring an emergency. So do we have a speaker here? Oh, there he is. Okay, Mr. Little.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of committee. Yes, this, this piece of legislation will give us the authorization by you to apply for these loan funds through the Water Supply Revolving Loan Fund. All these projects that we have listed in here, we will come back to you if we decide to do any of them. What we're trying to do right now is get our application in. Currently, the interest rate on this money is like one point one eight percent. So this is, I can explain a few of the programs. One of the highlights of this is the lead service replacement. We're putting in for a million dollar loan for that. And currently, the EPA is offered, offering a hundred percent principal forgiveness. So we actually have to go through the process. We have to do the loan. That would, that would currently replace about two hundred and fifty lead services in the city. And then we would get reimbursed for this, this project. That was just one of them. The big one is the meters project. We touched on that. We still are not really ready to bring that forward with the coronavirus. We put that on hold, but we still are looking to do that project. Maybe, maybe bring that to you later this summer. But basically, all this is doing is let us apply for these loan funds. And like, if we're successful in securing these funds, we would come back with legislation on all these, all these projects before we would do them.
Okay, there any questions or comments from the committee members? Or from other council members? Do I have a motion that we recommend approval for this evening?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, there is no other business before this committee, so we shall adjourn.
We'll need to vote on that.
Oh, and so we vote on it. Sometimes people don't vote on it, but okay. All right, can we vote on adjourning this meeting, please?
No, you need to vote on the actual piece of legislation. You had a, you had a motion in a second.
So we need to, how many people support this? Say aye.
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 And noes? Okay, so the motion carries. And we're done with that. And then now I can go ahead and rec, say that since there is no other business before us, thank you all very much for your patience.
Thanks, everyone.